Well, welcome, everybody, and we'll go ahead and get started. Clark, will you call the role?
Agent.
Here.
Plague. Howie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
I present one absent.
Great. Well, we will move into the discussion on Lowell and South Pools with Doug Holloway. And I want to say that I'm looking forward to this. I expect that this is in response to the feedback that you got from the surveys and community open houses we had at the pools, which I attended, and they're the windiest, rainiest, weirdest days possible, but many people stopped by and I gotta say, I really enjoyed talking with folks, but also being back in the pools. And at Lowell in particular, kind of weeding my way through cobwebs to look at the pictures of swim team that my that my kids were part of too. But but thanks for joining us today and for this update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. That was the only two days we had rain, I think, the entire month, where the two days we picked to have the open house at South and Low Pool. So as Madam Mayor mentioned, we are here today to present to you essentially an executive summary of the final report that has been compiled by our team and our consultant with Agnu Beck. And we will be, this is gonna be a little, as Amanda just said, clunky since we're not getting it on our screen here. I'm told this clicker will make it move. Greg, but it don't see it moving. Okay, great. So Amanda, you'll be our advancer. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. Just to give you a quick overview, Madam Mayor and council members, this just gives you a snapshot map of where all of your public pools are located that are in our inventory in Parks and Recreation. We also include the Boise City Aquatic Center, which is located in the West Boise YMCA, which is a public pool owned by the city of Boise, but managed by the by the YMCA team. The other six pools in our inventory are owned and managed by your Parks and Recreation Department. So just to give you a feel of where they're located, you see both the two pools we'll be talking about today are South and Low Pool. And Amanda, if you could advance, please. So to give you a quick background, we've been here before, both myself and our project manager from Public Works, Sean Wilson. So you're pretty familiar with the state of the two pools. As you're aware, they were built in 1953. They're a unique architectural design referred to as the Bince Design. They have a very cool and unique art deco entryway. There are some seventeen or eighteen, I've heard conflicting numbers, still standing across the country, but only a small handful. And again, conflicting numbers, I've heard as few as as six and as many as eight that are still operational. And two of those that are semi-operational are still here, located here in Boise. They are a unique feature in that they are a double deck type of a of a structure. So the pool itself is above ground. All the locker rooms and restroom space is below ground. The shallow end is three feet, where if you look at something like Ivy Wild Pool, we have a zero depth pool in addition to kiddie pool area. So you literally can play in the in the shallow end without any real skill set needed for for having swim capabilities. So the condition of the pools, as our project manager from Public Works, Sean Wilson, explained earlier this year, we closed all six pools during COVID-19. We were able to open four pools last summer, but did not open South and Lowell. And the reason was, we took that opportunity during the closure for COVID to do some code assessments and ADA assessments. And when those reports came back, which again, I think you've seen those reports, did reveal some significant deficiencies and safety issues that precluded us from reopening those pools until those could be brought up to code. To remind council, we do have capital dollars available in our 2024 and 2025 budget. You see the number, 3.32 million is set for Lowell Pool in '24 and 3.25 million is earmarked for improvements to South in 2025. As we progress through this presentation, council, Madam Mayor, council members, you'll see that we're looking at a cost significantly higher than those two budget numbers. So those are issues right at the top of of the list that we're going to have to contend with as we get closer to doing something different at both sides, starting in 2024. So when we began this outreach process, which we started in November of '21, we did set some goals, three primary goals that we wanted to accomplish during this outreach process. And one was, number one was to identify public priorities. What's important to our citizens in regards to these two pools? Number two was just listen and learn from the public. You know, what are, what do these two pools mean to the public? How important are they to the public? Both in terms of understanding both historical as well as nostalgic considerations, but also taking into account neighborhood location, you know, geographic location of these two pools, as they are both neighborhood based. We wanted to hear what was most important from the public as our second outreach goal. And our third was to create options and recommendations for you. So would take all that public input that we've been gathering since November, put it in a report that that we, I believe we've sent a copy of that report to you, and we'll be posting that online today as well. But a report that just gives you the options based upon that outreach effort that we have embarked upon since November, and then allow council to determine what those next steps should be. So the public outreach process, I stand before you today, Madam Mayor and council members, to say this has been the most thorough that we have probably conducted in any of our outreach opportunities in our department. We started back in November assembling stakeholder group that is made up of, and you see the the different participants, but we wanted to get, you know, neighborhoods, neighborhood associations, we wanted preservationists, we wanted users. We wanted members from the Cross Disability Task Force to be involved, since ADA requirements on these two pools are deficient. And we also wanted to make sure that we were looking at groups around the community that might not otherwise have an opportunity to weigh in on on what we are going to do with South and Low Pool. So such as, you know, for example, we sent in the next bullet point, we're talking about our surveys, we sent surveys to apartment complexes, for example, within a half mile radius of each of those locations. We've reached out to our refugee organization communities to get those surveys into their hands. So we really did look at how we can make the engagement process, first and foremost, as accessible as we possibly can. And I again stand before you today that this is a, this is the most thorough engagement that we have ever taken on in anything in our department. You see the survey results, we got a tremendous response, almost actually over 4,000 total responses between the two pools. And that's pretty amazing. What it does show, though, is that there is a unique interest in in what is being proposed at these two locations. We did, as Madam Mayor mentioned, had two open houses in April. And we had really good turnout for pouring rain on both days. And and the, most of the people that we saw were wide ranging, from youth to teens to a lot of our mature adult population that have grown up in these pools, had learned to swim in these pools, have taught their children how to swim in these pools. And now their children have taught their grandchildren how to swim in these pools. So we heard a lot of feedback from the nostalgic perspective, probably as much, if not more, with this, more so than the historic considerations. So the key findings of the report, and I won't read through all these, and again, Madam Mayor, council members, you have a copy of this. Essentially, Lowell and South are important functions to the neighborhood. They're neighborhood based pools. Where we look at swimming pool opportunities like the Nataatorium in Ivy Wild as destination pools or regionally based pools, these two really serve the 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 needs of the neighborhoods they're located in. Again, heard a lot from constituents that they, their children bike and walk. In fact, that the number one mode of transportation to both of these pools in the survey was biking and walking. So again, that tells us that these are strong neighborhood based, fabric based recreational amenities for the neighborhoods. The second key finding is above it, above and beyond everything, they want an accessible pool for their neighborhood. And so that was really important, that it's a pool that will serve everyone. And obviously, you know, creating a city for everyone means creating accessibility for everyone. So obviously, that's top of mind for you, Madam Mayor and council members as well. We did propose, do you want to see anything else here besides a swimming pool? And it was, I know we put in here the word generally, we could take that word out, it was not supported to do anything else with either of these sites, other than have a swimming pool located at both locations. And then fourth, obviously, both of these pools being seventy-five roughly years old or more, I'm not doing my math very well here. So but there's, they have a significant historic consideration. And not just for the neighborhood, we we've heard from constituents all over the community that that may have never even been to either of these pools, but have chimed in to say, you know, this is a unique piece of history, we need to try to preserve it. And so that was fairly loud and clear in the report that 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 our consultant has completed. So the there'll be a couple of options that we're going to be presenting to you today. And I will be turning it over here in just a second to Sean Wilson, our project manager. But as I've mentioned, the renovation based approach was generally supported more so throughout the the engagement process, more so than building a new pool. And obviously, the historic and unique elements of the pool rise to the top as a reason for that that feeling from your constituents. The entryway to this, to these pools are very unique as well. Every Bince Design across the country has similar types of of entryways, but this really is marks, when someone sees this, they know immediately that's South or Low Pool. And there are also some other unique features like the glass block windows. Were also noted in a number of the feedback, in a number of the feedback that we got back as important character characteristics to retain with this art deco frontage as well. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Sean Wilson, who will go through two options that came really loud and clear from our constituents and a little bit of background on what would be included in these two options. And we're a long ways away from obviously having complete details of the design, and Sean will go into that as well as an exact cost of that design, which you'll also have, do some discussion on as well. So I'd like to turn it over to Sean Wilson from our Public Works Department.
Mayor Council, thanks for having me today. I kind of want to start with a little high level discussion. We didn't, we haven't planned or designed anything yet. We're really kind of that discovery phase, just looking into it a little bit. So when you look at the, like, the range and the numbers and the level of accuracy, you know, minus fifty plus a hundred, it looks pretty substantial. And that really is, in cost estimating world, to go from zero to a hundred percent design when you're actually getting bids. And we're only a couple of percent into that process. So it's pretty, pretty wide ranges at this point. There's also the potential for some fatal flaw type critical information. So in particular, the case of South, the site is very restricted. So there'd be a lot of work to do with the planning department, getting variances, that sort of thing. So we're showing these and kind of as you tease into them, you learn more of that information as the design progresses. For the first option, renovating the pools, what we looked at is kind of adding, well, bringing everything up to code. There's some colored boxes on there. So it'd be like an elevator, new locker rooms, new mechanical room, expanding the deck out so it's code compliant. But most of the work would bring, not the work, this sort of baseline work would bring everything up to code and functional. There's a lot of stuff not shown here, like fixing the structure, resealing the concrete so it doesn't leak, those sorts of things. But there could be, as as the design would progress, there could be a ton of variations on what it would look like and what other amenities and those sorts of things. And just as a note, the the estimate for the renovate is in the lower end of that range. I think it came out to like between four and 4.5. But we haven't looked at, it's sort of like, the next step would be looking at the trim model, you know, do we add a lot of seating? Is there stage area, those sorts of things? So the range is there to kind of cover, hey, you know, as we go through this, there could be additions to this option. Amanda. Oh, clicker. Perfect. The second option we looked at is, hey, what if we had a clean slate? And then we put in kind of a modern sort of current facility? And again, this could take any shape. It could be a four lane, could be a six lane, could be, you know, different types of features, but we tried to look at what would, if we maximize the use of the site, what would it look like? In this case, this pretty much is completely modern. So six lane regulatory lanes, you know, for swim lessons, zero depth, diving board, kind of pretty much every feature a modern pool would have, and of course locker rooms, showers, those sorts of things. The other thing I wanted to point out, I guess, on the cost on this one, it is in the higher end of this range. So the current estimate, I think, is 5.5 ish, kind of a mid between five and six range. But in this case, you know, it has almost everything on here. So there'd be options to actually remove stuff and bring the cost down, but it would still kind of be within this range, like the first option. And kind of, I guess, next steps, if it's either either one option or both options, kind of the next steps would be to kind of go to 10% or to 30% or carry it a little further, flesh out any fatal flaws, kind of narrowing in that cost to get a bigger, better number. And I wanted to point out, these costs are in current dollars. So this is $20, $22. And as Doug pointed out, the budget placeholders are 24 and 25. And so, you know, these numbers need to be escalated two to four years of whenever the the actual capital investment would be made. And last thing I wanted to note, just the the construction market is real crazy right now. Didn't stabilize this year as we had hoped it would. So I'm trying to keep enough buffer in that range to, you know, so there's no big, big misses, but we feel pretty good about the numbers. So with that.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. So one thing I didn't, I failed to mention is I did give you hard copies, and I'm sure you've all seen those, in case you couldn't see clearly on here, so you could get a feel of what those two options might end up looking like. So the direction that we are looking for is based upon a number of factors, but first and foremost, from that engagement process, we did hear loud and clear, both in terms of of the engagement that we have been that has been conducted in terms of the survey, as well as the open houses, as well as there's been a lot of interaction between the public and our department with the public, you know, just expressing what their concerns are and what they want to see. All of that input has been definitely geared towards option one, which is renovate the pools, bring up all the code requirements, make them ADA accessible, and then reopen them. Option two was still on the table. And it's the the drawing that you saw is reimagine the pool, keep that front art deco piece, maybe some other general items from the the current existing pools, and then rebuild a different pool at each of those locations. The issue that we will have is that we, on option two, we will have to have some more robust conversations with the Boise School District on the South location. Because the footprint of that is it almost precisely what we have right now. So for us to expand that site and put in the locker rooms and the and the restroom facilities are actually going to be a separate building. They're not going to be built inside the current structure. And so we would need space to be able to do that. And if we expand the deck, as Sean had mentioned, which has to be done for ADA compliance and code code compliance, that also is going to expand the footprint a little bit wider as well. And we don't have that space. So those will be ongoing conversations we're going to continue to have. If we build a new pool at that location, it's going to be a lot harder to fit that into that footprint. So we may have to look at at other options there. The last thing I would point out, Madam Mayor and council members, is that I had said on a number of occasions, this has been the most robust engagement process we've embarked upon. And what I would say is that our effort to make sure that regardless of where you live in the community, regardless of your social economic background, regardless of your mobility issues from our disability community, we feel like we have provided an avenue for our entire citizenry to chime in on these two pools. And we've expanded that time again, from a November to a May timeframe for that input. And so we feel like we've gotten the amount of direction from the public on what they want. So my job was to deliver those two options to you. And as not only the decision makers on this, but I do need to point out that if, regardless of what option we go with, we do have a budget issue at 3.25 and 3.23 are the two numbers that we have to work with. And going back to what Sean just mentioned, so we're a full on option one, million and a half at least off of what we would need in today's dollars. Once Sean and his team escalate those numbers, I'm guessing they're going to be a little bit higher. And on option two, there'd be, I'm guessing significantly higher. So I just want to make sure that I continue to point that out, that we don't have the budget right now to to get this design done and get these pools started in '24 without council figuring out how that funding is going to going to come into play. So I would pause there. I just would add what Sean said, depending on the direction that you provide, then Sean and his team will go back and start tightening up those numbers and into the next steps. And we will keep mayor and council informed on, as we pull that information together on on what the details are starting to look like, so we can plan on what the plans would be in '24 and '25. So again, I will, I will pause for any questions, Madam Mayor or council members that you may have.
Thank you, Doug and team. I know that this was a huge undertaking and that the weather was not in your favor at all times. And so I think it's really impressive how much input you were able to get. And you already answered one of my questions that I must have overlooked in the report, which was the ADA community was involved in the kind of focus group piece of this, which I think is great. And one of the things that kept sticking out to me as I was reading the report was accessibility. We want this to be accessible. We want it to be, we want, you know, people of various swimming abilities and physical abilities to be able to use this facility. And so that's going to be kind of the focus of my first little group of questions. Can you explain to me what, is it zero?
Zero depth.
Zero depth. Can you explain to me what that means, like, and where we might have examples of that in existing facilities?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, so if you're familiar with Ivy Wild Pool, that has a zero depth. So you literally come into the pool and it's inches deep. And then as you move through the pool, it gradually gets a little bit deeper, but there's no drop off. It slowly gets down. And then when you get to the deep end, you have the drop off. And so it's very accommodating to all skill levels when you have zero depth at a pool. The option to that is if you have, for example, at the Nataatorium, we have a kiddie pool there. So that makes up for the fact we don't have a zero depth location at the Nataatorium. Both of these pools currently have that three foot shallow end. So and and I'd probably bring Sean back up, but to get the zero depth, we would need a larger runway. And we'd have to expand the footprint of the pool and get a larger runway to get that type of a depth before you would get into the deep end of the pool. And so number one footprint will be a consideration and an issue to do that. Number two, and probably more importantly, not more important, but certainly as important, is a cost. There would be an additional price significant cost to try to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you. So it is possible, but just maybe expensive with the existing pools if we were to go with a renovation option. But if we started from scratch, that would be it would be kind of best practice design element for the pools. Is that kind of right?
Madam Mayor, Council, Councilmember Wood is correct. But also, keep in mind the footprint, we'd only have, we own the property that both pools are located on. So the dirt underneath belongs to the city, but all the surrounding area does not. And so at Lowell, we have a little larger footprint that we can work with. But that footprint is really going to accommodate the building of the locker rooms and shower facilities and restroom facilities on the back part of the pool. And so if we needed more runway space to do zero depth, we would need to go into school district property to be able to accomplish that in addition to the additional cost to do that.
So it would be more complicated to do that best practice zero threshold entry to the pools. It would be more cost prohibitive using the current facilities to do that than it would if we started from scratch on the pools.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, that detail we don't have as to what the cost, cost differential would be if you, if we went with a zero depth design, and then again, keeping in mind having the footprint approval to be able to expand that. So if we had that in place, then our project manager could run those numbers and see how much additional cost that would apply. And I believe it, it's doable. Before I go any further, he wants to add to that.
I'll jump in here and ask a different question related to this right now with these drawings that we're seeing. I know they're not real plans, but it's, you're not anticipating doing zero depth if we keep the Lowell and South footprint as it is, correct?
Madam Mayor, council members, that's correct.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
That was.
Madam Mayor, thank you for clarifying that.
I was understanding.
I, we're not proposing that. We're proposing the three foot depth would still be in place. It would be all the code compliance we brought up to 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 compliance. And then it would be reopened at the three foot depth, 12 foot in the deep end.
Okay, so where I'm reading a lot in the report where accessibility is super important to everyone, we would have better accessibility outcomes if we built new pools on site.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, you would have the zero depth, which would increase our accessibility. I think if you talk to a lot of parents in the community, they their children learn to swim in another location. Once they're a little bit older, then they come back and they they swim at at these locations. Once they learn that that three foot depth, they can handle that. We heard that a lot from a lot of our constituents. But yes, I apologize for the confusion. No zero depth on this one. Three feet is our shallow end, what we'd be proposing. If it was a new pool, yes, a best practice is to go with what we have at Ivy Wild Pool, which is zero depth.
Great. And then my next question is kind of like, because I've grown up in old houses, and I know that even when you renovate an old house, it's never quite up to snuff in some ways as a new house would be. Like you, your maintenance costs are still higher, even if you've renovated an old house than it would be on a new house. So tell me a little bit more about that. Like, if we were to renovate these pools, what would the ongoing operations and maintenance costs look like compared to if we built a new pool and the ongoing operations and maintenance expense?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, I would anticipate it would be significantly less than what we deal with now. As Sean had mentioned, they would seal up everything on the pool. It would be, it's a, it's a remodel, so to speak. And there would be a new mechanical room built. And so those are the guts of the of the pool. I think one thing that Sean did point out to the mayor and council is that once we would get into it, there could be some issues that arise that would prohibit it being structurally sound potentially, and or there may be other issues we'll have to deal with. It could be cost. either cost prohibitive or drive up our costs or just things we're going to need to do to make it, make sure that we don't have any long term maintenance considerations. But the the bringing, just bringing it up to code and getting new mechanical features are going to be enough to certainly lower any of the maintenance costs we have that we're incurring right now.
So it's just like renovating an old house. You don't really know what you've got until you get the plaster off. Yeah.
I'm going to ask Sean to kind of chime in here on that one.
Mayor, Councilmembers, the the numbers and what we're looking at is to really do it right and bring it up all the way. So, you know, contingency for the concrete. When we do take care of some of these older assets like we do to Fire Station Six, we do it in a way to plan to get decades of time out of it. So we estimate to get those decades of time. And I would anticipate O and M to be about the same between the two options when anticipate with all the newer systems being installed. They'd be very similar to the putting a new pool in.
Great. Thank you. Yep.
Madam Mayor, Doug, I guess I'm not a swimming pool guy and I don't have kids who are learning to swim. And so it's not, it's not a place I go. I guess the main question I have is, which of these two options is most useful to the greatest number of people in the public? Like which one would be most used by the most number of people?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bajent, it's a tough one to answer because anytime you build a new pool, it becomes the hot new feature, recreation feature. So we do see like, for example, if you go back to 1998 and saw when we opened Ivy Wild Pool, it went through the roof. And those numbers, you know, kind of leveled off and it became, but but a pool like Ivy Wild and the Naddatorium are destination pools. They're like regional. These are more neighborhood based. And even with a new pool there, it's still a small footprint. It's not like we're going to be able to accommodate, you know, three, four, 500 more users per hour at a, at this pool because of the footprint. So the number of of visitors will certainly go up if it's a newer pool, if it's a new brand new pool, I'm guessing. But as far as significant, I think it's, it's probably negligible in the long run simply because they're just neighborhood based, smaller type pools. If you want to get that kind of bang, then you would relocate them to a larger track of ground and build a much larger facility similar to what you have at Ivy Wild or the Naddatorium.
And then one, my other question totally unrelated is I took it from Sean's presentation that the worst case scenario is regardless of the option, we could end up spending like up to 12 million on each pool.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bajent, yeah, the the plus or minus 50% to plus 100%. If you went with a new pool at the high end, which Sean had mentioned that a rebuild is probably closer to that five and a half to six million. And at that 100%, yeah, it could be as much as $12 million to replace that pool. If you're looking at 2024 and 2025 dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I might ask that same question that Councilmember Bajent asked first in a slightly different way. So there's the allure of the new pool. What about capacity? Do we, do we think that that's actually going to be an increased capacity? If you were to build a new pool from scratch, or is the capacity about the same? Or is the capacity not even really being met at the two current pools anyway?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, you answered it yourself at the last. We're not meeting the capacity at either of these pools right now. So we have plenty of space to accommodate more users. There are two lowest attended pools. And so a new pool or existing renovation, I think will will still be in probably that that range because of the fact that even with a, with a new pool, this isn't going to have slides. And, you know, all kinds of cool little shallow in turtles that blow water up and all kinds of cool stuff that you see at Ivy Wild. Or at our kiddie pool, for example, at the Naddatorium, they'll still be fairly limited in size and scope for what we can get on that footprint.
Great. Madam Mayor, a quick follow up there. Great job with the public outreach. Great job with the report. It was really nice to kind of see those fine details. And those were some of the things that people were asking for was the, you know, the splash pads and the the slides and all the other things. And it looked to me at the end that like these really weren't going to get anything extra except for maybe that zero depth kind of aspect of the pool. Size wise, they looked about the same capacity. You know, it sounds like they weren't quite being met already and it's not necessarily going to increase the capacity. And cost wise, they're sort of in the same, you know, kind of ballpark area. And so it seems like if they're both fully accessible, the zero depth entry is really the, and maybe some actual lanes for swimming instead of the round pool are the only thing you're gaining from a potential redesign. Is that correct?
Madam Eric, Councilmember Hallie Burton, yes, I think you're, you're, you're pretty close in that observation because of what the limited space we have to work with. You would be able to create, what you would get with a new pool is you would have the ability to have more better swim team competition and practices and also swim team, or excuse me, open swim times where people like to lap swim. That becomes a lot more accommodating when you can actually build a pool with lanes. Whereas you already described, we have a round pool there. We still can have swim team. In fact, the Lowell team traditionally has always been our largest swim team. And we're able to accommodate 100 kids in that pool for swim team practice. So don't tell me how they do it, but our coaches are getting, get real innovative and creative in doing that. But I think in the end, you, you get probably less of an amenity boost with a newer pool than you do with the older pool. Aside from, we don't eliminate anybody from an access perspective with the zero depth.
Madam Mayor, I've brought up another question that I was thinking of earlier. Doug, prior to COVID, and I feel like you have told us this before, and I just can't remember. What did the use, like what was the attendance of Lowell and South pools compared to like other neighborhood pools like Fairmont, for example?
So Madam Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, both South and Lowell run in that seven, in that five to 7,000 visits per year range. And both Bora and Fairmont are in the teens, like 14 to 17,000. And then if you compare that to Ivy Wild, which is in the high 30s. And that's where where you get, it's a regional pool. People are driving to go to Ivy Wild and to the Naddatorium. People are walking and biking to go to South and Lowell. And really to Bora and Fairmont as well. They're more of neighborhood based pools as well, but they're a little more attractive. They're bigger. And so they do get a little bit higher attendance.
Is the, what's the mode of transport to Bora and Fairmont? Is it car first or bike first?
Madam Mayor, we did not include that in the survey, so we would need to to check into that to see.
Did you say that that it was pedestrian first for Lowell and South?
Bike and ped combined, yes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, in my mind, that probably translates to the numbers that you're going to get because if kiddos are walking and biking, then there's, you know, half the number of people going because there's not an adult with them. Just in terms, so it's a different type of neighborhood pool than even Bora and Fairmont likely are.
Madam Mayor, I think you're correct in that observation.
The, you know, what Doug's looking for is, before I say this, any, anybody else have any questions or? And Councilmember Willetts?
Yeah, I have a question and Madam Mayor, maybe this would be better from you. Is this a quote unquote package deal? Do we have to do both of these at the same time? You know, what is the expectation?
Sure. I think Doug had in his presentation at the beginning that from the capital improvement plan, these have been in the plan for quite a while now. I mean, they were in the plan before I got on council. Is it in the ordering Lowes in 23 and then South would be in 24 in terms of when that 3.3 million dollars is designated? But of course that doesn't reach the budget. So that doesn't necessarily mean that they can be built in those years.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, it's 24 and 25. Yeah, and it is Lowell. And we could adjust those. It could be South could go first, locate, we, it just came up that way in the capital, in the capital plan.
Madam Mayor, you have one more question. Doug, do you know if any of our pools in our inventory, have any of them been funded through philanthropic dollars or partially funded through philanthropic dollars like our parks have been?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, Ivy Wild Pool was built fully by a donation from, from a donor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Doug. The, the pool with the art deco vibe, does it, is it on any sort of registry? Or does it fall under any sort of protected category, anything like that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, it currently does not. However, I did just hear today from the State Historical Society, I'm going to say all this wrong, so I apologize. But it was voted on by the historic site review team this weekend at a meeting in Pocatello to be added to the National Registry of Historical Sites. So now we'll go back to a national, and that nomination will go back nationally. And the word I got from our state folks was that they felt very confident that it was both pools were going to be named to that registry.
Okay, and just to follow up, Madam Mayor, my, when we first learned about all the work that that's been done to reach out to the community to find out whether, what are their thoughts about these facilities? My, my initial response to that was similar to Councilman Bajent's, like, how do we, how do we maximize the ability for as many people as possible to take advantage of these facilities? But I think it's important, what you're telling us in terms of who actually uses these facilities and how they access them. And so I guess the way I'm, I'm viewing these facilities, I'm almost viewing them as works of art that our community gets to engage in. And I, I guess that's kind of changing my perspective on it. And also the fact that they are apparently very beloved by the community. And as we've learned from the report, those are the people who have come out loud and clear about what they want to see done. So that's, that's really influencing the way I'm looking at this moving forward.
Madam Mayor, I, I guess I might have a differing opinion from my, from a council neighbor here. I'm really looking at this through the lens of how many people can we serve here? If we have young families, I mean, we were super users of the Naddatorium when our children were very young because of that, because of that zero entry pool. We were there all the time with various other families from all over the city who used that facility for that reason. And so I'm really looking at it like where, A, like how much is it going to cost? And how do we get the biggest bang for our buck? I know that these are beloved pools. I know that people have so many memories in them. But I don't believe that people cannot build positive, wonderful memories in a new facility where we can, you know, kind of preserve the historic pieces of that whilst building a more modern functional facility. So that's kind of where my head's at, like, what is, what does it cost? And where's, where's the benefit to the community? How can we get more folks able to bike and walk to their neighborhood pool and feel safe doing so rather than driving across town to Ivy Wild or driving across town to the Naddatorium to take their toddlers to the pool? So.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to speak more towards South Pool because that's the one I'm more familiar with. I work with a lot of the kids who go to South Pool. And one of the things that I noticed about the kids that I work with that go there versus Ivy Well is the kids are showing up on foot and bike and they're usually showing up alone without their parents. So it tends to be sort of a different demographic of kids that are a lot of times looking to cool off. You know, during the summertime when it's really hot and there is a little bit more independence there. When I look at the two different structures, though, I see what sounds like we think it might be cheaper to keep them than it would be to build something new, maybe not significantly, but we think it might be a little bit cheaper. Am I understanding that correctly?
Madam Eric, Councilmember Hallie Burton, yes.
So we, we think it might be a little bit cheaper to keep them. We think we have the ability to make them fully accessible. We don't have the zero depth, but that's really talking more about kids who don't know how to swim and less people with disabilities. Because we do have access with, we would be putting into access for people with disabilities with elevators and also with the pool entry as well. And then we also have the added value of both what the community members ask for and the historical and architectural importance of the facility. So to me, I, I don't see that big win. If you would have told me like these other pools would have had way more capacity and that these pools were at capacity already. And this was going to serve so many more people, you know, and it would be able to have a slide and be able to have this and be able to have that. It might change my mind. But when we're talking about about the same footprint, about the same capacity, the value of keeping something intact and the ability to do it cheaper, that that's hard for me to, to look at a different route.
Yeah, I guess my, you know, my priors are kind of towards if we're going to do it, we should go to something newer. The thing I've been thinking about most is, you know, how we're going to afford it in the first place. And I guess my input is if we can't, you know, if we can't figure out how to expand the budget to get to where we're going to go, I'm not sure what use it serves to spend a bunch of department time and energy coming up with concrete proposals that we can't meet. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about here. And I don't, I don't know how any of my other council members react to that. But I'm not sure we're making a decision on something that we're going to be able to make a decision on right now.
Yeah, I think that's a valid point. And to try to help move us along with some direction for staff, I'm going to try to kind of take that and just make some suggestions. You know, for, for so long, these have been on the CIP and we knew that at this point in time, we'd be having to make some of these decisions, but there's a lot of unknowns from a budget perspective on, on, on both designs. And ultimately, as we saw in the minus 50 to plus 100%, just in the construction market these days as well. And but staff wanted to be transparent in that and sharing us, sharing that like uncertainty rather than, you know, declaring that there's a number that they believed it would cost. You know, and I tend to believe that these, that these pools have served an incredible neighborhood need. And until we can better know that we have a CIP plan for the budget, a decision today from staff on keep it round or go to a rectangle or from council, I don't think is necessarily the right step. There's a lot of feedback we've received. I was a user of one of these pools and we held our kids when they were babies. But, you know, we're in a privileged place where we could be home in the evenings with our kids. And so we take them to the pool, but they didn't go to the pool when they, you know, without us until they knew how to swim. And then they walked and biked. They serve a really important need, as Jimmy mentions on South. It's, it's the same demographic at Lowell. And I feel really fortunate that my kids were, you know, use this pool and got to know these kids over the years. But we need to figure out from a CIP perspective, how we can fund the deficit rather than lead people to believe that in 24 or 25, we're going to be, you know, moving ahead on one of these pools with the design that, you know, we might give direction on tonight. And so I think you've heard the council president Protem's concerns about access overall with the lack of kiddie pool or zero depth. But then a, a sense also that, you know, if these work and they're more affordable, then it might make sense. But I'd like to see, and we need more time because this was only supposed to be a half hour conversation. Not that we wanted to restrict you, but that's what it was budgeted for. What we really, what we think is realistic in terms of not spending staff time on building up plans, but perhaps spending staff time on how we get to even covering the deficit for the most cheap estimate, which I think was 4 million. I mean, 3.3 to 4 million, not so much, but if it's six or plus, then, then we've got an issue there.
Madam Mayor, just to add to that, I think that's wise. And I think that right now there, that cost differential estimate really showed us that there, you know, there could be a variety of things that happen. You know, we could head into a, we could head into a recession and construction costs could go down and we might be able to do things cheaper. They could keep escalating and we might only be able to do one. So I think that's wise to look at our budget first and then figure out where we go from there. But I think that the public engagement in the report were fantastic. And I would encourage any member of the community who cares about these pools to really read that in depth. It's not dry. It's actually a really good read.
And I jump in and say too, that the, the public engagement process was incredible. I agree. And it's not going to go stale. And I jump in and say too, that the public engagement process was incredible. I agree. And it's not going to go stale. I expect, you know, I would anticipate that if we did it again in two years, which I'm not saying we're going to have to do, is my argument that we wouldn't have to do it. We'd hear very much the same thing unless some of us, what did you call us, mature former users of the pool?
Madam Mayor, I tried to avoid the word senior citizen if I could.
Unless some of us just no longer have the energy to show up. But what we learned is that these pools are beloved. They've served an incredible, they've created, they've been an incredible part of the lives of many Boiseans. They've made cooling waters available to some of the kids that need it most in the city. And ultimately, that's what I want to see us doing as we make the next steps on design. I love these pools. I'm partial to them as they are. But what will guide my decision making on this with council's advice and consent will be the confidence that we know how we can fund, you know, the first step to the first pool. And then two, a good sense that these will indeed be accessible to anybody that would like to come.
Madam Mayor, just a quick question about how, if there is some sort of historic designation attributed to these pools, how does that affect us moving forward? And as Councilmember Hallie Burton brought up, is part of any type of funding, would that include opportunities for somebody in the community to help fund any improvements?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, the answer to your second part of your question is we're always open to talking to folks about philanthropic opportunities. So we're always open to that. As far as the first part of your question, it's my understanding that it would not have any impact other than it has the designation.
Madam Mayor? Yes. I think your approach is wise. I really enjoyed the conversation here. I think each council member's had some really, really sage thoughts. I'm prefer, I am preferential to the historical aspect of this pools. I think they're beautiful. I think we have an opportunity to preserve history, but that's irrelevant if we can't afford it. So I think we need more details. So appreciate your perspective and your direction.
And this could well be an opportunity to develop. I didn't realize that Ivy Wild was funded fully by philanthropy. The, but this could be an opportunity too, as we're trying to figure out that gap, to call on folks to join us in this effort, especially those that are so in love with these pools that they want to designate them as historic, perhaps they'd also want to help us designate them again as usable by helping fund the future renovations of these. So do you have what you need for kind of next steps? And then we'll schedule some time to further the conversation on budget.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'll re-huddle and talk about
One last question.
how we shore up the costs a little bit and get a little bit firmer. I think what we need to do, we won't spend a ton of time on that, but in order for you to make a good budget decision for '24 and '25, you'll need to know what you're budgeting up against.
Yeah. And not only firming up costs for the design, because that's might take more work and recognizing it when you get in there, it changes. But then thoughts on how we actually fill that gap?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
One last question, Madam Mayor. So Doug, as it stands now, are those pools open or closed at this point?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, they are closed.
And moving forward, we don't see that we're able to open them unless we commit to these changes?
Sure. And my understanding is that they, at this point require so many renovations that the American Disabilities Act is triggered. And so we have to make them ADA accessible when we're going through and doing the renovations. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, that's correct.
Great. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next up, we're going to hear from Sarah. Sarah's on board in with HR. She's here to talk about the business partner model to answer some of the questions that came up in our first budget workshop. And then from her, we'll hear from Eric. I've got some comments on kind of the approach that we're taking on all of this, but I'll have Sarah go ahead and start.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. It's nice to be back. Here's just another layer of detail to make sure you're comfortable with where we're going. We've talked a lot about what we're calling HR 2.0, the need to kind of reshape, reorganize how we do the work and add some functionality that we just haven't had before. So let me just talk you through specifically the business partner model. I'll go through sort of what that means in terms of definition, what the benefits are, and then show you some work structure so you get how all these pieces fit together. Not a lot of slides, though hopefully we'll go relatively quickly. There we go. So what is a business partner? This is a really common position that happens in lots of different organizations. But what it is, is really a seasoned and experienced HR professional. They've been around a long time. They've been in different functions in HR. They are HR experts. They're assigned to a specific department or departments and really serve as the partner to that department for anything they need HR related. So our main emphasis is really understanding that particular, the needs of that function and the department, and then making sure that the business objectives align with the people's strategies. It's essentially your people expert for your department in a really easy way to say it. And let me talk through some of the benefits of it, and that might help you just define it a little bit better than even that. There we go. So the intent is really to have a deeper understanding of what the needs are. Think growth at the airport. Think the water renewal bond. Those situations in those departments require different things, different things relative to their people. So really understanding what those needs are as opposed to sort of a general blanket. We're HR. We serve the city. Makes it hard to really focus in on what those needs are. Making sure we have strategic alignment. So take the airport again. If we know they need to hire 25 people, there are specific functions in the airport that may be different than any other department, maybe different than arts and history to make sort of a dramatic difference. How do we strategically align and get the airport what they need so they can be successful more quickly? Because we know what their needs are, we're really strategic about getting them what they need. The other thing is to think about this proactive workforce consulting. We've seen, you know, the gig economy. What does that mean? What are current workers asking for in terms of benefits? What are we hearing through the grapevine that we can bring back to the larger HR team and say, hey, we're hearing some stuff. Here's some things we might be doing. And then how do we help directors look at, you know, who's retiring? What's happening in the next two years? Not just, oh, shoot, five different people just retired from a place. Now we got to go back and figure out how to fill those vacancies, which is essentially some of the stuff we're seeing right now, especially when people choose to take early retirement. Those are ones we may not have anticipated. But if we know the workforce, we know the team, we might be able to predict that a little better. And then a really important one for us is this concept of single point of contact. We have Kristin Holtz, who's lovely in our benefits team, but she has 2,000 people. So 2,000 people need at some point maybe to talk to Kristin. That is hard to manage even on your best day. Or they'll call me and say, hey, I have a benefits question. Who do I talk to? It's kind of this musical chairs of who in HR do I find? Imagine you knew who your HR point of contact was. If I had a benefit question, I would go to Mark. Mark is the expert. He'll know. What he doesn't know, he then can transfer over to Kristin. It kind of reduces the flood that comes into HR that we just can't handle. It's just more than we can do. Our response times aren't what they need to be, and we just aren't giving the robust answers that we possibly could. So this model is really intended to sort of help in that, in that way as well. Then the other thing is just really working on consistency. Right now, we have different people in different departments playing the role of HR because they have to. We just don't have the capacity. So they're thinking about, oh, why don't we recommend this level of compensation for that new hire? Or why don't we create a job description that looks like this? They're all well intentioned, but we're not consistent. There's potential liability there as well as it just makes it tricky if there are different parts moving in different places. So consistency is a really important thing. So those are some of the key benefits to it. And then let me show you the structure, and we'll certainly have time for questions, but let me just get to this. There we go. Now that's a little hard. Whoops. This is going to be a little hard to see, but let me explain it. The gray boxes are no change. The green boxes are title changes and some adjustments on those teams. And then the blue is the new ad. So the business partners would be a whole new function with a new leader and five business partners. The talent acquisition team, that's currently Employment Services. We changed the title and function of that group. And then total rewards, we would move compensation over so that instead of being just payroll and benefits, it would also include compensation. Part of the benefit that's not mentioned on my previous slide of bringing in business partners is to help relieve some of the workload that's currently on Employment Services. If we need a team to focus on talent acquisition, which we clearly do in the current state, we have to pull some work off of that team. They can't go get new, new people and fill vacancies if they've got all the other work they've got to do. So it's a combination of standing at business partners, but also pulling some work off of the current Employment Services team to give them space to do recruitment, if that makes sense. And then just one last slide is this isn't the final who goes where, but this shows the volume of work that each business partner might have. So we don't certainly have enough to have one per department. So you can see Airport and DFA might be a grouping, Public Works and Legal could be a grouping. So they're going to have multiple clients over time. If this proves successful, we could say, hey, the larger departments really need their own. But that's to be seen later. That's not a right now issue. But I just wanted to give you an example of how there's the concept and then how there might need to be multiple departments that are covered by a particular business partner. Okay, having run through that very quickly, any questions about the model?
Madam Mayor, thank you, Sarah. Can you go back to the slide that has the org structure on it?
Yes, I believe so. There we go.
So the two green boxes, the position changes, what, I mean, what were those positions before this proposed change?
Yep. So the total rewards team was payroll and benefits. And the only major change there is bringing the current compensation analyst who was in Employment Services over to that team. So that's total rewards. It's pay and benefits. Right now, they're separated and often you see them combined. So if you're looking for the benefits employees get through the city, it would include wages and benefits as a, as a way to structure a little bit tighter. So that would be that. And then we would just change the title to total rewards. Talent acquisition, that's the biggest lift. So currently, we have an Employment Services team does job classification, compensation, some recruitment, definitely onboarding. That team has so much work that is so diverse, it just gets, it's a backlog. We get stuck there. So the concept is how do we pull some of that work away, give some to business partners, some to the total rewards team, and then allow that group just to go out and recruit to make partnerships with veterans communities, universities, schools, trade schools, and just go find talent. In the past, we didn't have to focus as much on that because everybody wanted to work for the city. Well, everyone still does, but there's a lot more competition. So where it was much easier in the past to recruit, it's just a lot harder. So the concept is we have to get ahead of this. And right now, we're just not able to. So let's have a team that can really dedicate their time to that instead of being pulled, you know, many different directions and only, only scratch the surface, which is what's currently happening.
So follow up, Madam Mayor. So under the green boxes, those are teams of people.
Yes.
It's not just like a person who does talent acquisition.
Exactly right.
People that do talent acquisition.
Exactly right.
But then where it's called out more is under business partners than each of those business partners is called out. That is super helpful to me. Thank you.
And the reason I did that was just because this was focused on business partners, but there's a whole structure. We'd be happy to share if that'd be helpful, that I just didn't, it's so small, it's hard to see on a screen like that, but.
Yeah, that's totally fair. Thank you. That makes a lot more sense. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Director, thank you so much. You know, we've talked before, there is a lot of competition.
Councilmember, I'm having trouble hearing you. I don't, I don't know if any, yeah, it sounds like several of us are.
I don't know. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, the volume's lower than it normally is. I don't know if we can adjust the volume on our end.
I'll turn up mine, see if that helps. Does that help?
For the time being, could you talk more closely to your speaker? Sorry.
I'm not really sure where that is on the laptop. Sarah, Director, thank you so much. This is really helpful. I'm glad to see that we are reallocating and realigning some work. You made mention that in some other departments that they've been taking this on. Can you elaborate on that? Do we have some other work that's been done in other departments that might have seeped over from HR that will have some new capabilities now?
I believe I understand, Councilmember Willetts, the work being done by other departments, it had to do with things like recruitment, writing job descriptions, go, you know, basic HR things. We heard of some very well intentioned people making compensation recommendations using old data. That kind of thing, it really, because we haven't had capacity, people have had to make do, is a very easy way to say it. And, and that just doesn't feel like our best day. So if we can do better partnership and augment some of our capabilities, it can not only make us more consistent and better at the work we do, but it also will relieve some of the teams that are really, should be dedicated to the work at hand in their departments where they've had to sort of take up some of the slack that we've had to, had to ask them to do. So I think there's capacity building in lots of different ways, even just by augmenting our team.
Thanks. That's helpful.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Sarah. So I'm not quite sure where we are with our DEI work with HR, but is that lens going to be used when we we get these folks on board?
I will say we always look for a diverse workforce in everything we do. I don't, that, that's just part of how we do our work. So I think yes is, is the fair and accurate answer for you.
And this will be helpful too. I'll go ahead and take this one. As we go through the DEI work at the city and a large part of what we're looking for, the policies, procedures, and then ultimately the culture to be a welcoming environment, having folks that are like solely focused on recruitment that are also familiar with our goals in these areas will be, will help us strengthen the outcomes in these areas.
Yeah, I'm always going to ask that, Sarah, because I think it's important and it's just not something that we should assume is happening and we, we need to call it out and it needs to be purposeful.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, Sarah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, as Sarah wraps up, and we move over to Eric for the IBC, I just want to say a couple of things. I mean, we've talked about needing to support and shore up our existing workforce. And then of course, grow the workforce to meet the needs of our community as we grow. And so Sarah's work and further explanation on these business partners is a part of that responding to the market so that we can competitively recruit and then hire folks. And then what we've got to do is take care of the people that we have because they're helping take care of the people of Boise. And so I just had a great conversation today with Tony and with Carrie. Tony is the, is the head of organizational development for the City of Boise in HR and Carrie from Community Engagement about bringing back the employee leadership summits. Now that we're at the moment in time that we're at the last two years, we've had to pause things about growing out leadership development programs for staff at all levels of the organization. And most importantly, something I'm super excited about is developing kind of a graduated step-by-step ladder that folks can go through as cohorts to like grow skills, feel much more connected to the mission and vision of the organization, which connects them more deeply to the service they're providing and creates opportunities for them to lead within the organization. So we want to do that for our employees. We're going to celebrate them by bringing some employee celebration events back this summer like we did last year. And then importantly, we have to acknowledge the cost of living increases that we've experienced. And so you'll hear from Eric today for the IBC that what we've looked at, what I've proposed is based on numbers. So based on data, 5.9% increase in wages for employees now that we can use from funds that came from vacancies, quite frankly, in the last year, rather than making them wait for the raise when we have the funds on hand. I'm proposing that we do this now and then increase the living wage designation that we have throughout the city. So back in the day, TJ Thompson really encouraged the city and kind of held the city's heat to the fire to develop a living wage to begin with. And the proposals that we recognize the changing times that we raised that from 1353 to 16, I don't know, 56, 57, oh, 50, 1650. But this is all in that pursuit of supporting, growing and celebrating our existing workforce for all that they do for the City of Boise. And then coupling that with work that HR will do to help continue to build the capacity we have.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have three interim budget changes for your consideration, as the mayor mentioned. There are some commonalities across the three, the three IBCs. All of them represent advancements of items that otherwise would be included in the upcoming fiscal year budget. They were previewed at the May 24th City Council Budget Workshop. And with all three of them, no budget resources are being sought within fiscal year '22 due to the vacancy savings. due to the vacancy savings that the mayor just mentioned, with the full impact, full financial impact of these items built into the upcoming budget year. The first item is the addition of a payroll supervisor into the human resources department. That, that unit has seen a high degree of, of workload, bringing on new systems and increasing and expanding workforce. This position will allow that department to support that work, support strategic initiatives, so on and so forth. The second item is for the creation of six positions, five business partners and one business partner manager. Those are the positions that Sarah was just going over with, in her presentation. And the third item is the advancement of compensation adjustments for our general employees or our non-contract employees. And that's really, there's two components associated with that. The first component is an across-the-board 5.9% compensation adjustment in response to the high inflationary environment that we're in. Loss of purchasing power for our city employees. That 5.9% is recommended and is recommended to be advanced into this fiscal year with the July 1st implementation date, utilizing vacancy savings. The second item is the mayor mentioned or spoke to is adjusting living wage from $13.53 to $16.15. That adjustment would be for all permanent non-contract positions, working on average of 20 hours or more. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that the council might have.
Madam Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes, and we turned up the volume on our end too.
Well, I Googled where the speaker is, so hopefully. Eric, I have a, I have a trivia question for you. What percentage of our budget goes to salaries and benefits separate from police and fire? So what percent, I'll ask it maybe a little differently too. What percentage of, of the budget does this affect? Not only for 2022, but 2023?
I can answer the first part of it perfectly. The second part, I'll probably have to come back as part of the workshop or in advance of that, I can certainly get that number to you. Compensation or salaries and benefits make up approximately 60 to 62% of the city's overall general fund budget. In terms of the breakdown between contract and non-contract, I apologize, I don't have that in front of me right now, but I can get that to you.
Thank you.
Then we're, a quick question here. So the 5.9%, that's a, that's a cost of living increase. It's not a merit increase. Is that correct? That is correct, Councilmember. That is a, a cost of living that would go to all general employees as part of the 23 budget that you'll, you'll consider in the coming weeks. There is a, a merit award recommended, an increased merit award recommended as part of that, albeit one time. Good. Perfect.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to note real quick, when we started having this conversation, I think several weeks ago, one of the things that came to mind is that at the state of Idaho, we have a cost of living committee that convenes, it's supposed to convene every year, tends to not always convene. But I, I was honored to serve on that committee. And we looked at what state employees needed for cost of living adjustments on a yearly basis. We don't do that here at the city, and I think that that would be a really good practice for us just to make sure that what we're paying our employees is keeping up with the general economy so that we're not diminishing their power to, you know, attain housing, to enjoy their lives, to attain education and that we're able to ensure that they're keeping up with the economy too. So I think that as we go through this process, which is a good one, considering that many of our contract employees have been getting yearly raises that our general employees haven't been getting. I think it would be good to revisit this from here on out on a yearly basis, just as good practice.
Yeah, and we intend to do that, Councilmember, and it's, it's our intent to, to create a meaningful merit system. So historically, we've had 3% merit increase and that goes into a pool. And then it's distributed to employees, which means, you know, not all employees have received a raise on an annual basis. So then what we've seen is a diminishing power of their, their paycheck, especially these days even more so. And so we want to encourage innovation and we want to encourage excitement in the job. And so while it's important that we look annually at maintaining the value of the pay that we've established for employees, to create a merit program will take some time because we're going to have to intentionally set aside one-time funds to do that, but so that it's truly merit rather than, you know, the little bit of raise that would be used instead. So to have both a look every year at cost of living increases, but then how we really reward those employees that deserve to be rewarded. All right. Well, with that, I think motions in front of us or should be, I guess, not yet.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the interim budget changes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I have some.
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I've really appreciate Eric. He's answered a lot of questions on this and thank you and have talked to Sarah. Couple of thoughts, you know, inflation is there. It's, it's here to stay for a while. I think we have to do whatever we can to preserve our employees because it affects the taxpayer when we're not well-staffed. So I'm going to support the motion. I do have concerns that while doing it early makes a lot of sense, especially since people have been working extra, they should get rewarded for that, that we are setting the table for the budget because so much of our overall budget is personnel. So it, it doesn't give us flexibility. I don't think anybody on this council will vote to go down on compensation in the, in the 2023 budget. So it, it does create a table that's already set for us in some ways, but, but I think given where we are, we need to do this. So I'll be voting yes.
I appreciate those comments. All right, Clark, will you call the roll?
Woodings.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel, land acquisition, records exempt from public disclosure, pending probable litigation, communicate with risk management regarding pending probable claims, labor contract under Idaho Code Section 74-206, 1 B C D F I N J.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Clark, we call the roll?
Woodings.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. We will be back at six.